It is 6:15, so we're a little bit late. We are here to talk about the roofs, potential roof referendum 2021. And I don't see... Wayne for Donald?
He should be here. He's usually here with bells on. And Jeff? Are you not letting them in, Paul? Earth to Paul?
No, it's all... It's wide open.
Kashi, you perhaps want to reach out? Maybe they tried at 6:00 and then thought something happened?
I did just reach out. Donald was on his way and...
Oh, he's coming in person?
Uh, no, uh, it's virtually, I believe.
Oh, alright.
About to sign on though, one minute.
Sorry, folks, just bear with us. We will get the presentation going in a second. Argue amongst yourselves. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us.
Welcome, Donald.
Good evening, Mayor.
Alright, gentlemen, we are now at the roofs 2021. And I will turn it over to Jeff and Donald from our DPW department. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to say Jeffrey's gonna be leading the presentation tonight. And I gotta give credit to Scott Ryder for the interesting name and part of the Joint Facilities Committee meeting for the name of the roof referendum project. So with that, I will... I will give it to Jeffrey.
Great. Let me just get this shared so everybody can take a look. Give me one moment here. Share. Alright, is everybody able to see my screen for the roof referendum 2021? Great. So, good evening, members of council. We're just presenting the Joint Facilities Committee roof referendum for 2021. Here. And, you know, myself, Jeff Leon, Deputy Director, Public Works, Donald Noon's Director, we're gonna be going over the slideshow tonight. And what we have... What we're recommending. Just a quick overview. The roof referendum for 2021, the discussion topics we'd like to cover is an industry average for roofing systems, our roofing condition analysis, the history of town roofing, our current roof strategy, roof referendum 2021, our proposed strategy and explanation, and then the timeline that we're estimating this to be completed, and then, you know, the recommendation. I just want to touch briefly on some of the industry averages for roofing systems. As everybody's very familiar with, we've been doing a lot of school roof replacements. And after a 20-year stay, we're eligible for reimbursement. So this kind of coincides with what an expected commercial roof system, you know, is. 20 years is pretty much where we are. A lot of roofing systems, as you can see on the chart, different types, they kind of flow between 15 and 30 years, 2025 being the most common. And where the town lines up is we have a lot of EPDM type and modified buildups, which are very common from the 80s and the 90s. Here's just a quick example of where we find these different types of roofing systems across the town. You know, again, I'm not gonna go through all the lists, but, you know, again, we pretty much have a little bit of everything across our town portfolio, which makes it kind of challenging on how to replace it, when to time it, and obviously, some things are a little bit more expensive than, say, you know, a standard shingle roof like on someone's house versus a built-up roof and the work and labor that's involved with that. Um, the... We had our roofs looked at by a professional, myself and BG. We went out and surveyed everything. This is a, much like the pavement index that everybody's very familiar with, the Rhodes projects. Roofs have a similar system where they have an excellent being the best system and then a poor condition. And, you know, I'm not gonna read off every example of what they are, but it just kind of shows like the evolution, much like that pavement index everybody kind of knows and is familiar with. Going over our current portfolio, you see on this spreadsheet, we have quite a few that are landing in the poor to marginal category. And you kind of look at the ages, they're at 20 years or they're going quite a bit north of that. When it breaks down, I have a nice graph a little bit later on that kind of shows the amount of buildings' roof age and, you know, kind of why we're here tonight going over this proposed referendum. I just want to give a quick look at what an excellent roof was. This is a picture of Phase 2 Henry Barnard when it was just being finished. Everything is in perfect condition. This is an excellent roof. You know, you're gonna have 20, 25 years of trouble-free maintenance with a system like this. Another roof here, you know, is a good roof. This is a picture of the Pearl Street Library. This is another system that is in really good condition. It's worth investing in. We can maintain it. It's, you know, it has plenty of service life left. Once we start getting into fare, it's a really good time to start budgeting and planning for replacement because, you know, roofs are expensive. And you want to, you know, kind of think of these things forward. You're kind of in the middle of its lifespan. It's kind of like your computer car. It's in good condition. You're gonna put a little bit of money into it, but you know it's starting to get there. Marginal. Once we get to a marginal roof, and as you can see, the seams are starting to deteriorate or having separation of where the membranes come together, this is the point where, you know, it's really at the end of its useful life. At this point, you know, we should be really looking at replacing it and only, you know, buying ourselves like a year or two, you know, really just to kind of get the replacement in place, not really do any heavy investment into it. This is, you know, like a clunker sitting in your yard leaking oil. It's not something that you're gonna really put money into. And then unfortunately, we have a poor-conditioned roof. The system has completely failed. So what you really end up doing is just chasing around leaks that you have. There's really nothing you can do for a system as this, besides just, like I said, chase leaks. The system is, you know, there's no investment in type of system, and it's just really placement's the only option. So this was a slide I was alluding to a little earlier about our current roofing portfolio. We, you know, the green graph is showing our number of facilities based on the index of where they are from excellent to poor. And the blue graph is just kind of showing the age of that roofing system. And, you know, where we seem to find ourselves is 14 facilities are at that 25-year mark on average, which is, you know, we're really in line with that marginal-to-poor rating system, and it's just time for a heavy, you know, look at roofing and what to do. I just wanted to touch on kind of what, you know, how we got here in the roofing history across the town. Back in between 2007, 2009, the Department of Public Works assumed this responsibility for the Board of Ed buildings. There was about 13 sites, over 1 million square feet of roof, which is a huge amount of roof to maintain and manage. Unfortunately, the BOE roofs are also on the biggest buildings in town, so, you know, just it just makes it the largest portfolio that DPW has to manage. And trying to manage that type of roof and the type of investment, it gets a little cumbersome under traditional limits. When you look at, you know, roofs outside of Henry Barnard's three phases, Enfield High, and, you know, the JFK renovation that's going on, there's still approximately 550,000 square feet of roof to address across the town, which is, you know, still a very large chunk of roofing. You know, roofing with non-school facilities is traditionally easier because town buildings, municipal buildings are just inherently smaller. 170,000 square feet of roof was managed by DPW excluding WPCF at that time. And, you know, the nice thing is WPCF has been completely rehabbed, so that's a nice new roof, so we don't have a lot to worry about in that. But again, with a town building being smaller, 13,000 square feet is the average roof size of the municipal building. Again, they're just smaller. 13,000 square feet is just cheaper because it's just the volume. Once you start getting into a board-of- ed property, 72,000 square feet is the average. It's a little higher because places like the middle school and the high school with such large roofs, it kind of skews that number a little bit. But even if you look at Henry Barnard Phase 3, that was approximately, or with all three phases, excuse me, that was approximately 70,000 square feet, give or take. So again, it kind of falls in line with that average. These are just very large roofing numbers out of sight. So our current roof replacement strategy, we've been roofing at pre-referendum limits. And, you know, unfortunately, it's taken us about three years, three phases, if you will, to do each one of the school roofs when we put in, you know, that $670,000 or so to get a roof replacement done. You know, what happens is each phase is another year, and we all know that cost of living and, you know, other inflationary drivers can affect the market. And, you know, 3%, 4% is not unusual for construction materials and everything, you know, obviously is based on inflation, so it might be higher, might be lower. But, you know, in reality, you're buying less roof every year. So the more that we kind of push it along, it's more expensive to do the same roof the following season. On average, unfortunately, when we have an older roofing portfolio, it also means that there's a lot more repairs and chasing leaks. This was a snapshot out of our expense at the time, and we were spending about $76,000 a year to replace roof systems. And if, as you saw earlier, a lot of them were in that marginal-to-poor condition where we really shouldn't be repairing, we should be replacing. So this kind of, you know, we're chasing our tail a little bit here. $76,000 is a lot of expense just to maintain a leaking roof. And again, this doesn't really reflect some of the soft costs that are harder to quantify. When we get leaks at night, we're having our custodians come in, you know, so we can open the buildings, so we're drying carpets. There's fire alarm systems or lighting systems, other electrical components that can or have been damaged from roof leaks. So the $76,000 is just a direct spend to a roofing contractor. That's not incurring some of the other fees with getting our alarm systems back online and making sure the buildings can open the next day without any adverse reaction. So the strategy with this referendum, roof referendum 2021, you know, why were these roofs chosen? The list was compiled, like I said earlier, with a townwide survey. We looked at it. We looked at building department data for permits being pulled and getting roof ages. And we were investigating this with a consultant, with myself and Buildings and Ground Staff. We went out and looked at every single roof and did all the non-destructive testing and analysis that we could. Our importance order, it's really listed on the prioritization of which is gonna fail first and what's gonna be the most destructive across town. So we really don't have a lot of space to displace a large group or department if we can't open that building, if we have to do an emergency replacement. We're gonna have to shut down, which is very interesting, especially if you think about like a classroom, you know, where we lose a wing. That's six, seven classrooms that we wouldn't be able to occupy while, you know, roof workers being formed. So funding alternatives, you know, without a referendum, we're really doing CIP only. And it would just be, you know, we're at a point now where we really need to look at multiple CIP roof projects each year to really just kind of get ourselves on the ball so we can manage it a little bit better in the future. It's just an aggressive project that has to be looked at, and there's just different ways of doing it, referendum being one, and then aggressive CIP approach as another. So this proposed referendum, roof referendum 2021, is a $13.6 million investment. We're estimating about $5.8 billion. Yes? Are you able to hear me okay up there? No problem. If anybody has a problem, let me know, and I'll stop and repeat a slide. And if we're good where we are, I'll just continue forward. Not a problem, Mr. Mayor. So again, this particular roof referendum for 2021, we're proposing a $13.6 million roof investment. It's estimated that we're gonna receive about $5.8 million in state reimbursement. Again, I'm just saying that we're estimating just based on historical information from our past projects. We've been roughly receiving about 70% reimbursement from the state of Connecticut on eligible roofs. So this is really a great thing. So when you look at 13.6, we're getting 5.8 back. So, you know, again, it's just a really nice thing. We can do different things with it. But with this particular plan, we're proposing of replacing approximately 406,000 square feet of roof over the town and BOE sites in over a five-year scope. So this program kind of resembles a Rhodes program, very similar in the strategy and the deployment. And what this will do is it will position for us to invest for future roof replacement projects, places like the high school and even JFK. Doesn't seem like all that, you know, far in the future, 20 years seems like a long time, but even just the high school, we finished that project, you know, we're getting on to six years almost. So in 15 years, that roof is gonna be at its expected life expectancy. So it's just get ourselves here. We can start planning for these really large roofs, like the high school's a huge roof, and it's just gonna take multiple years of investment. So when it's time for it to go, we're well in position to just pull the trigger and have it and, you know, not incur these multiple phases and whatnot. So this is the list. This is the proposed strategy. And again, it's a five-year list, and it's looking at priority based on condition and then, you know, disruption. It focuses on the elementary schools, Parkman being in a phase. And again, it's phased because there's, I'm looking at not only doing the original section of building, but the additions. So the timeline for the reimbursement from the state with that 20 years coincides when that write-off happened or the sign-off from the state. So we want to make sure that we do a roof at a school where we're eligible. We want to make sure that we receive our reimbursement. And, you know, the roof referendum is planning to do that, so we are getting that money that we can get. So again, Parkman would be phased, and that would be the first roof to go. It's 27 years old. It's a built-up. And, you know, again, we're gonna be looking at doing a nice system that we're doing a Henry Barnard PPO, and then making sure that we have other things. There's a lot of interest in renewables, so making sure the roofs are solar-ready, if you will. And we're gonna plan for this, all of our roofs. We want to make sure that we're looking for, not just for roofing, but if there's opportunities for, you know, green investment, that we're ready to pull the trigger. Because no one wants to put a solar panel on a 20-year-old roof. Everybody wants to have a new roof because solar panels have 20, 25-year life expectancy. So having new roofs positions us better for other things and other avenues at the town. Looks like they would go on to pursue, and it'd actually be a good idea, especially in the green market. It seems like costs have come down quite a bit. It's another way to burn costs. Again, then the first year of public safety, the police station, that roof is pretty much the original from the day that was built. And again, it's a shingle roof. It just needs to go. We are there. It's at 28 years old. Again, HB Stowe, that school, same position. The additions, we want to hold out. That's why it's phased. We want to make sure we're eligible for all of our reimbursements, and we don't, you know, don't miss out on an opportunity to get money that we could have turned back to the town for other purposes. Again, now Alcorn, so with the new projects and the new focus in the Alcorn facility, putting a lot of people and programs in there, it's an older roof, 27 years old, Prudence Crandall. You know, again, this roof would be done in its entirety at this point. We're projecting that all the roofs are gonna be eligible for reimbursement, so this is gonna go in one phase. Enfield Street School, right now, about 17 years old. Again, we're gonna be at that age time where we'd be eligible for all the state reimbursement. And then we're gonna circle back to where we started off, Parkman and Stowe. In the final phase of the elementary schools, we're gonna get those last couple additions roofs. So now all the roofing systems are pretty much the same, spot-on, and everything's kind of starting from a fresh slate. And then lastly, what's interesting about this particular referendum 2021 is the Enfield Annex, the former Fermi High School. This is a very large roof. This is the largest roof that's in the town's portfolio for a municipal structure. So this is addressing this whole roof. We're putting a lot of programming in here, and it's just a really good time to look. Now that we're really utilizing the building and putting more departments and more functionality to this building, it's a roof that, without a referendum, is unattainable unless we do lots of savings and lots of days. Again, this project all kind of comes out to about $13.6 million, but it really positions us for future investment and savings. So again, it kind of gets ours, gets ourselves out of the spot we're in now, positions us for, you know, a little bit easier progress moving forward. And it's really a great idea, and Joint Facility's been working really hard on this. So, you know, the strategy, this, again, this only is gonna work if we continue with Hasheba Memorial Eli Whitney through CIP. We started with the initial phase, and that's under design and redo, and that's moving forward. But we have to continue that CIP approach and just complete these schools through CIP. The roof referendum is just assuming that this is the case. Henry Barnard, with the phasing, the reimbursements need to be reinvested with that as well so we can, you know, finish off that last little addition at Henry Barnard. What that will do is we'll put all of our schools, our elementary schools, you know, back at ground one. You know, we're starting off with everything being new. It's a lot easier to manage. And then roof referendum 2021, the funding, really, it's just, those properties are just without a referendum in CIP, it's multiple phases. So it's just getting all that off the table, and then we can focus on easier things that can be managed through CIP. And again, the Enfield Annex, just such a large roof without a referendum, it'd be very difficult to do that in phase. You know, again, we're looking at 5.8 million in potential reimbursements from the state. Again, it changes every year, and it's released by the state on what the reimbursement rates are. But, you know, projected on historical averages, we've been getting about 70%, which is really great. So we're only really paying for 30% of the roof, state's covering the cost for the rest. So no harm in looking for that reimbursement. We plan to look for that reimbursement because it would be foolish not to. We can do a couple things with this thing. We can utilize that reimbursement money to replace more roofs and extend the scope of roof referendum and keep roofing, you know, and we can get all the town facilities with new roofs. Or, you know, we can do something else, save it for some of the larger roofs. So there's lots of things we can do with the reimbursement. Another thing is if we, and that's if we reinvest it. We don't reinvest it, we could always put it down towards debt services. We could use that to kind of fund or pay down the debt. And I'll defer to the finance director on how that all works, because I'm definitely not a finance person. But it's $5.8 million that will give us flexibility on how we'd like to spend it in two different ways. Again, this would limit the reach, though, of the roof referendum. We wouldn't be able to go do all those extra town buildings. But I am gonna say town buildings and municipal buildings are, on average, well, well smaller. They're a lot easier to phase just because they're well within reach of a traditional CIP approach. And then, again, we can always, you know, like I said, we can always do something with that. This is just a proposed continuation list. With the roof referendum 2021, much like Rhodes, everything's gonna go out to bid and gonna go to the streets. So these are projected prices, and if things are favorable and there's extra money, much like the continuation list with Rhodes, why not keep roofing with the money that we have? So we would just keep tackling projects on the town side based on what's left, getting it out there. So we just keep roofing, no problems, and just kind of just march down the line. These are some of the continuation items I'd like to look into if that was the case. And, you know, from what I understand, if we don't list it, we can't do it. So I want to make sure that we put as much up there so we can paint with the biggest brush that we're allowed to paint with. Again, this is a little dated, but this is just kind of showing what the mill rate could potentially be or may not be. I don't want to speak too greatly to it because, again, this is something I defer to the finance director with, make sure that's still proper. But it's just kind of giving you an idea of, you know, what it could do. What I do like to talk about, too, is just kind of like the current dates and times to get this referendum through. It's a long process, but it moves really fast, and we're already in March. So it's really good that we're here today, or tonight, I should say, getting this out there. But to get it onto the ballot for the vote, we need to make sure that it's there for September. So again, just don't, you know, it's a lot to do, but it's something really great to pursue if there's a lot of interest in it. And I don't think I have much else to say other than our recommendations. You know, again, in an interest to protect the town's investment in the building program and our service capabilities, the roof referendum 2021 program should be implemented. Roof referendum will address a lot of the roofing issues of our current portfolio, especially that we're transferred from the board of ed acquisition for property maintenance. And the roof referendum would provide the town council time to save and really plan for the next phase of roofs, much like the roads in your cars. Nothing's forever, so we're always gonna have to keep planning for that next big phase. And this is just a great program to get us and position us well for the future. And with that, I would like to say thank you for having me on tonight.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks. Thanks, Donald. So I'll open up the question and the comment. I'll first start with the members of the Facility Committee, Deputy Mayor Suzak and Counselor Sicola.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Donald. Actually, it's good to see you back, Jeff. So on the Alcorn building, we found out at facilities that that may be eligible for partial reimbursement because it has board of ed there, and it still is a board of ed building and has never been turned over to the town. So that being said, maybe, you know, and also, whatever happens this June for what our reimbursement will be, that will be locked in for the whole five years. So it locks in at around 70%. And also, we did send out to Green Bank our Henry Barnard roof, and we kind of gave them a timetable of what we're expecting for roofing. And Jeff's right, we gotta look for, you know, other ways to lower our carbon footprint because it's the, I guess, conscious thing to do. Thank you.
Counselor Sicola, I want to put you in a spot, but I want to make sure you have a chance to speak. You're on a committee as well.
No, thank you. I mean, I don't really have much more to add than what was in the presentation. I just would like to say that the Joint Facilities Committee has worked a really long time on this. We have gone round and round on it. We've had a lot of good discussion on what should be involved, what kind of numbers would be palatable, how many town buildings versus school buildings should be included. And we really feel like this presentation and what we're putting forward is really the best option. It does both school. It does some town buildings. It's a good reimbursement rate. And honestly, it's a number that I think that is going to fly with the public. And it's got a great tag name, so that's good, too. So I think the key is education, education, education to the public. If we're gonna do this, just gotta make sure we get it out to the public and they understand exactly what we're trying to do, how long it's gonna take. And if we don't do it, how much more money it's gonna cost us? It's gonna cost us, I don't know, three times more. I have no idea. A lot more if we do it in phases than if we do it under referendum. So I support it. I think the Joint Facility has done a great job with it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Crisanti?
Yes, I think the committee has done a fantastic job, you know, in prioritizing the roofs that need to get to be done. I think Jeff and Don, you know, the research that they've done to present everything that was presented tonight. This is the second time that I've heard the proposal for the roof referendum. And tonight was really, you know, there's a couple of things that we really have to take a look at is, you know, the roofing history. I don't think that we really, the town really had a plan for, you know, every five years for something to be done to X amount of roofs. And now, there's a vision with this referendum, you know, especially with the plan, the timeline, and the prioritizing of the roofs. I think that's gonna be very important. As Gina stated, education is very important. I think that, you know, a selling point is, you know, even if we, you know, took the aggressive CIP multiple roof projects that we've been doing, it would take years and years and years to even go through one round of what's being proposed right now. So I am of support of this project, and I think the hard work that DPW has put into this plan, and plus the cost and the reimbursement is very favorable.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Mueller?
Real quick, I was wondering, this will be on the Town Managers page as well?
Thank you.
In Twitter? We'll push it out to get that education piece out.
Yes, I was waiting for my appropriate time to speak, but yes, we'll put it out tomorrow. And not only that, I think you've all been through this before, and education is the integral component here. So we're already working with Debbie, you know, with media as to how to get it out so it's not a one-time to put it on the website and then people forget about it. We're thinking if the council is inclined to move forward at the farmer's market this summer, we have a lot of people come through. We want to have a booth. We're gonna have an exhibit there, hopefully staff it and have some of you. And what we're gonna do this time, we're going to reach out to our bond counsel, Matt Ritter. Because in the past, we've always been unclear and uncertain about what we can say, when we can say it, and how we can say it. So our hands have been tied. And I think in some circumstances, we were too circumspect that we could have spoken out and expended funds up to us, and we didn't do it. out and expended funds up to us and we didn't do it because we didn't know the rules. So as soon as you give the green light, hopefully I'm seeing it tonight, I'm going to reach out to him tomorrow. I want him to come in. He's going to educate us on what we can do and we can then allocate proper resources to do it the right way and educate the public. And we'll look for other means. Debbie's looking at it, too, through our social media. But as I say, to get it out to the public because I think once they hear about the plan, how thoughtful it is going forward, I think they will support it. And likewise, the road referendum has been successful because people understand it. It's been every five years. Now we're coming full circle. And I think when they see that we've done that again with the roofs, those are our two big expenditures. And once we get those under control for the future, we won't be in this predicament again. And I think we're going to have a very, I never thought I would say this, but an exciting budget process. I'm starting the department directors tomorrow.
It's always exciting.
To go into it, but we're guardedly optimistic. So I think when the public sees what we've been able to do with the budget this year, hopefully, if the state comes through with what they've said they're doing, I think they will be receptive to this, to see that there's been vision with the council, fiscal responsibility, and I think we're in good shape. I will tell you, the ink isn't dry and it's a moving target, but the House did vote on the COVID relief. We talked to Congressman Courtney this morning, both Carol Hall and Tom Aronony send us from the state, their counterparts, what they think the funding will be to Enfield. It's quite significant. At this juncture, I don't need to be held to the numbers, but they've increased. The last time I heard, it was $4 million to the Board of Ed and it was about $8 to $10 million on the town side. Now it's $7 million on the Board of Ed side and $12.8 million to the town. Now certainly, there will be strings attached. You'll have to look to see what impact COVID's had, but I think the restrictions are going to be minimal. And when it comes to the governor, they want it to come out sooner than later. And that may be strict as to the timeframes that they have to disseminate it. But I will tell you, we're going to do our budget like we do our House budget. We're not counting on any inheritance or found gold pot in the backyard. We're going to do it according to what we have, what our needs are and what our means to pay are. We are, however, as we've been doing with Jeff, that's why we hired him, to come up with an inventory. What do we need to do going forward? What is the plan to paint every building, to carpet every building, to put new boilers in, to do roofs and roads? So we have a plan going forward. So never again do we come to the voters and say, oh, my gosh, you know, we didn't put in the commitment and now we're behind, leaks of roofing, we're wasting money, I'm filling potholes. We'll have a plan. So likewise with the CIP, all of my directors have submitted a wish list of things that have been deferred over the last few years. And that list will be ready for council consideration. So after the budget, when we know what the federal government has given us pass through the state, we will then be able to meet after that and you can go through it and say, what projects can we prioritize to invest into the future of Enfield and our residents for the good? And that's how I know you will spend that money. It won't be a one-time feel-good expenditure and have a big party. It'll be what can we do to invest that will put us in a good fiscal condition for the next couple of decades? So I think the horizon and the future is bright. And I thank Jeff and Donald for their hard work and Joint Facilities, incredible asset to have you folks and meet the way you do and the hours that you put in. And just as a by and by, I may have another exciting project for you to consider now that you may have the roads and roofs off your plate, another one that will be just as challenging and incredibly important to the town. And we'll talk about that in the next couple of weeks.
So Jeff, Donald, two, well, actually, three questions. When will the public hear? I mean, I think we're actually going to be speaking later on how we're going to hopefully loosen up our facilities usage policy. I think we have to have public hearings on both this and when we do the roads. I didn't see your timeline, Jeff. When will be, is it?
He didn't have it up there.
I know, but I didn't see exactly what month was it?
Yeah, I believe it was August 2nd. August. Oh, sorry, Donald.
August, okay. I want to make sure that we, you know, we definitely have a public hearing, so if people can come and speak, I think it's important. And, you know, I think, from my understanding, you're sort of using the same tact with the roads where every five years, or every five to six years, we sort of, you know, again, to manage the roads, we go out, sort of go out the referendum. Is that kind of the same process here now? Or maybe every five to six years, along with the roads, the goal is the next line of roofs that may or may not need? Is that kind of what, you know, the tact is? So this is sort of like, again, almost like every five or six years in the roads, we're relooking at, you know, the issues, is the roof kind of the same idea here?
Well, we could always approach it that way. Whether it would be five years or not, probably would be a little fast. You know, roofs are a little longer, but yeah, it's not a bad idea for some of the larger roofs.
Like every 10 years? I mean, when we sold the roads back in the 90s, when we sold the roads, we said, look, this is the first phase, we're going to do it every five to six years. And so, again, we were able to sort of plan out also from a finance perspective on how much this would go to debt if we did this every five or six. So just a suggestion, I'm not saying we have to, but maybe we have this, like, we plan tentatively every seven, eight years, whatever it may be, to, you know, those next phase, when those ones that are poor, you know, are in good condition become fair or poor. This is just an idea that you guys can consider. I mean, I think it's, I think people buy into the sort of the, you know, that vision of, hey, here's the first group, but we also realize once we're done with these, the next group is going to be, you know, whatever, 10 years down the road.
I think, to defend Donald and Jeff, their heads are spinning between consolidation and getting this information.
I know.
So that's kind of our job to come up with that policy and that, whether or not they know it, that's my intention. I've talked to Donald about that, too. And I think when the citizens understand that it will be much less frequent for the roofs, and I kind of am thinking that we would stagger them. I think that you would do five and do roads and then do roofs. And that way, people, it's much less to have to deal with. But the roofs are, obviously, you get 30 years out on the roads. We have a lot of wear and tear, so you have to address them and there are a lot more roads than roofs.
I agree.
So we'll address that going forward.
This is a suggestion, that's all I mean.
But that's my plan.
Yeah, very good, I mean, very good proposal. I think, you know, this will also tie into Green Banks eventually, which is something I think the council's, you know, bought into or committed to, maybe is a better, you know, committed to. You know, and then I think the other thing, too, to think through, you know, is for John, I mean, I think one of the reasons why JFK was successful is that John did a really good analysis of what our future bonding would be. And I think this is just one of those things that we just put together and say, look, here's the estimated impact if we do this. Because, again, the taxpayers knew going in exactly what they were purchasing.
And we have that. And one of the, unfortunately, the fact we couldn't do it last year as much as we wanted to, it did put us in better position because we retired some bonds than we renegotiated bonds. So Standard and Poor's and our consultants and our investment counselors, in conjunction with John, have said this is a good time to do it. I will tell you that CCM is recommending across the state that municipalities and cities take advantage of the very favorable interest rates and conditions right now in the financial institutions. And many other communities are doing multiple referendums now to take advantage of this moment in time. So John will give an update when the time is appropriate.
Right, perfect.
But the fact we waited a year put us in better position.
Again, I'm in support of this, too. So well done to both Donald, Jeff, and the committee. Anyone else have any comments? Jeff or Donald, anything in closing? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Sir, anything in closing?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for their hard work and that of the committee and also the support of the council on this. It'll take, it'll take all hands on deck to get this done from beginning to end, and I know that we can do it. Thank you.
All set? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you to the staff and we'll get ready on that next project. I think we already started it.
Okay, this, do we have a motion adjourned, a special meeting?
Second.
By Counsel Mueller, second by Counsel Mangini, who is in favor. Aye, the meeting is adjourned. You have one minute, quick recess, and we're going to start with the public, the public We are calling the regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council Monday, March 1st, 2021. It is 6:54. This is the public hearing to amend Chapter 26, Article 1, Section 26-35, EDC membership. We will read the ground rules, public hearing ground rules. Public hearing has been scheduled for allowed interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the amendment of Chapter 26, Article 1, Section 26-35 of Enfield Town Code. Enfield Connecticut Economic Development Commission. Sheila, roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Riley. Counselor Sifrazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Counselor Ungary.
Here.
Counselor Bosco.
Here.
Counselor Sicola.
Here.
Counselor Crisati.
Here.
Counselor Hemler.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
That's 10 members present, one absent.
Thank you, Sheila. The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, Town of Enfield legal notice. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut on Monday, March 1st, 2020, at 6:50 p.m. to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the amendment of Chapter 26, Article 1, Section 26-35 of the Enfield Town Code. Enfield Connecticut Economic Development Commission copies of the amendment on file at the Town Clerk's Office or at W W dot Enfield dash Connecticut dot gov. Sheila M. Bailey, the Enfield Town Clerk, February 19, 2020. Quick ground rules, there is no timeline, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so everyone have the opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has a one chance to speak, we shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. Those individuals desire a third chan, excuse me, for those individuals to desire to speak a second time, we shall permit those individuals to desire a third or fourth, et cetera. Please refrain from personalities. Now, this is open specifically for this public hearing, meaning for the economic development move from 15 members to nine members. Anyone would like to speak specifically on this? You know, and before we, just real quick, so what people understand, the public, we actually have currently 15 members limit on the commission. The proposal is to move to nine because they're struggling to have a quorum. And that's what's before. Welcome.
I'm Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. I'm on the Economic Development Committee and have been for, I lose track, but probably over two, maybe three years. And in that time, we've had people on it, they'd come, they'd go, they don't stay, they don't participate. And I strongly encourage you to lower the number because it doesn't need a lot of people, it needs a lot of workers. And filling a group with people doesn't mean that you just need to put it on your resume. So I'm asking that you consider it. I think the team that we now have, which actually are 10, there are 10 people at the moment, but to bring it to nine will be, I don't think I need you to worry about it being 10, and I'm not speaking out of school from my committee, I'm just saying that attrition will probably happen. And so I don't think anybody needs to be moved off, but the people who are on it now are participating. And I send out things all the time, as my team will tell you, and I'm nothing more than just a regular member, as I send stuff to you guys every once in a while when it comes to economic development things. So I'm asking that you do consider it to go from 15 to nine. I think it's a benefit to the town.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak specifically in this public hearing? Anyone else like to speak specifically in this public hearing? Going once? Anyone like to speak twice? Hearing none? Any last call? I declare the public hearing closed. It's right around 6:57. I guess I give you two more minutes, a quick recess before we start the regular hearing. So you have two minutes and we will start, the public hearing is closed, we'll start Call the regular meeting to order at 7 o'clock on Monday, March 1st, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council. Prayer, Counselor Mangini, please rise.
Lord, guide us to lead as a responsible council by respecting one another's positions and opinions. We ask that you help us continue our role as effective leaders by setting policies that will be beneficial to our residents. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3, roll call, please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Riley. Counselor Sifrazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Counselor Ungary.
Here.
Counselor Bosco.
Here.
Counselor Sicola.
Here.
Counselor Crisati.
Here.
Counselor Hemler.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
10 members are present and one is absent.
And for the record, Sheila, Counselor Riley is home with, celebrating her son Logan's 10th birthday today. That's why she is absent. And from what she says, he's quite a Lego master for everyone's information, so good for him and happy birthday. We move on to the fire evacuation announcement and number four, in case of fire, we have doors in the back of the building. Please orderly, either left or right out the door in case of fire. We also have doors to our left, to the audience's right. Please go through those doors, out to the doors in the hallway to the left, down the stairs, out the doors down the bottom and out to the parking lot. on the bottom and out into the parking lot in case of a fire. Moving on to item five, minutes of preceding meetings. Motion to approve special meeting, February 16th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
By Counselor Mangini.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mueller. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing ended. By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 10 in favor, Sheila, zero against? Do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting of February 16th, 21?
Some.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak, second by Counselor Mueller. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing ended. By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Sheila, 10 in favor, zero against? We don't have any special guests. We move on to item seven, public communications. Just a reminder, if you want to speak before the public-- excuse me, before the council, it's five minutes, one time for the first, and then at the end of the meeting, you're welcome. It'll be three minutes. Again, please refrain from personalities. Anyone like to speak for the council? Welcome.
My name is Peter Genitis, 3 Farmstead Circle, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm here to address the Town Council about the Town Council. Originally, some on this council wanted to condemn the attack on the U.S. Capitol on January 6th by supporters of then-President Donald Trump. Further, the Enfield Town Council approved a resolution at its meeting on February 16th against the attack and others, and in support of local law enforcement. I have no qualms whatsoever with the part about supporting the local law enforcement. In fact, I'm glad you did that. But I do have an issue with the council's singling out the so-called attack on the Capitol and then just inserting the words "and others" into your resolution. I do have a problem with the implied implication that President Trump's speech and rhetoric caused, as one member of the council uses the word "insurrection", or to use Chuck Schumer's word, "the erection." Was there a riot? Yes. Was there turmoil? Yes. Was there chaos, mayhem, mob action? Yes. That being said, there was an insurrection is ludicrous. There was no attempt to overthrow the government. There was no armed attack with guns, tanks, Molotov cocktails, taking hostages, trying to dispose certain leaders with another group of leaders. That's what an insurrection is. It's a revolt. It's a rebellion. It's terrorism. The American Revolution, prior to, during, and after the American Revolution, we had insurrections in this country. We had some right up to-- just up the road from us, Chey's Rebellion. In Pennsylvania, we had the Whiskey Rebellion. Those were resurrections, insurrections. We had the Civil War before, during, and after insurrections that took place. Look at what happened in Baltimore and Washington D.C. and New York City during the Civil War. Read your history books and see how bad that was. So to claim that Trump's rhetoric and speech helped incite what happened is as disingenuous as saying that what Al Sharpton, Maxine Waters, Nancy Pelosi, Chuck Schumer, Gerald Nadler, Adam Schiff, Eric Swalwell, Kamala Harris, CNN, MSNBC, The Washington Post, The New York Times. What all these people in the organization have been saying for the past four years had nothing to do with what happened on January 6th? This council chose-- to make me skip a page-- well, I didn't. This council chose to insert the word "other" into your resolution. You want to condemn unlawful acts? Then mention some. Minneapolis, Seattle, Portland, New York City, Baltimore, St. Louis, Kenosha, Detroit, Rochester, and many more American cities. And yes, don't forget to include Washington, D.C. prior to January 6th. For a councilman to relate our Capitol was on sacred ground, the only sacred ground I saw that was being attacked this summer was people trying to go to churches. Only because of time, I won't elaborate on the influence of big tech, Facebook, Twitter, Google, and what part they played in creating the division amongst the American people. Another member of the council purports that if people are unhappy with election results, the Constitution allows us, through the political process, to remedy the problem. True. If the Speaker of the House and the Majority Leader of the Senate would follow the Constitution as written, they show no alliance to the Constitution-- allegiance to the Constitution. Another member of this council mentioned the use of "political stunt." Well, that's what's going on in Washington, D.C. now. It's a culmination of a four-year political stunt by the Democratic leadership in Washington and their flock of sheep in the House and the Senate. To paraphrase another member, nobody should be okay with what happened in our Capitol. True. Absolutely true. But then condemn what happened this summer in many cities across America. To not do so seems to imply that. The throwing of frozen water bottles at the police, the shooting of fireworks at the police, confronting police officers in their faces, spewing them with filthy and racial remarks. To use the words of a councilman would imply approval of using violence. Now, I know I'm close to my time. Do you want me to finish or--
30 seconds.
Well, I'll stop there because they just break up the flow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Genitis.
Welcome.
I agree.
Welcome.
T.Cats, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm not sure. Is this the Washington Town Council--
Press the button, Bob.
I'm confused. Is this the Washington Town Council meeting? I'm not sure if it's Enfield or Washington. Oh, it's Enfield. That's right. What I want to bring up, you people have totally neglected the air handling systems, which are archaic. They have to be cleaned twice a year. You have to upgrade them. These are 1970 technology. Massachusetts is doing all the schools upgrading their air handling systems. We wouldn't have to be like this with masks inside if the air handling system was upgraded. We're worried about roofs and windows and redecorating. That's the most important thing for the health and well-being of the employees and the people that visit the town, all the town buildings. That should be number one priority, not a roof referendum or the other things that you're planning. We don't have the money. The state is going to be $22 billion in debt within a decade. And where are you going to get the money from the state? They can't afford to pay any money out. Now, the other thing I want to bring up, because I had a call, I got to go to work. The school system is declining 100 a year, students. Right now, in 2010, there were 6,300 students. Now there's 4,900 students. Right now, K through 2 in the last five years is down 19% of students. The 3 through 5 is down 10%. Funding more money for the schools. I'm not saying close any buildings. We're on the verge of eliminating one. You have to relook at this. But keep increasing their budget. You can't cut their budget. You got to understand that. We're in the bottom 10% in education in Enfield. We're not doing well. The state knows it. That's why we get extra money. And we're not spending it correctly. It's about time that we did something. Now, the other thing, you know, our governor keeps giving out statistics. 75 and over, only 8% are vaccinated, fully vaccinated. He's saying, oh, they're all 70 over, old, it's great. But that's where it ought to start. It should be age-based. Nobody else should get vaccines. Start with the oldest to the youngest. That's the way it should be. That's where the priority is. We are doing it backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council this time?
Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
I apologize for my back. Teddy Roosevelt is quoted, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how strong a man may stumble, or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man who actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who at the best knows in the end triumph of high achievement, or at the worst, if he fails, at least he fails while daring greatly. So that is his place shall never be, that the cold and timid souls who neither work for victory nor defeat." The reason I'm here this evening is to talk to you about willingness. Many people in Enfield volunteer because they're willing. In Enfield, it could be the Lions Club, a garden club, the senior center. And people get involved in these groups because it interests them, and they want to participate with the people around them. Others work for the food shelf or Parkway Pavilion because they want to help people, and they want to try to make their lives better. Another group are the political ones. That's me. They want to make a statement about their principles, their ideals, their beliefs, and they want to share them. They want to join a respective group they feel is in line with their values or political philosophy. And their involvement may start with just listening and going to meetings. From my experience, the next step is willingness. A willingness to try, to be part of a solution, a willingness to give up their time and energy and their money to step forward and fill a void that may be on the council or the Board of Education or a board or commission. Do these volunteers do it because they're paid? No, none of you have. You truly know that. And they do it because they want to try. They want to share their experience. They want to learn. They are willing to be part of a group of diverse opinions and be part of the grand outcome. In Enfield, you know, to be on the Town Council or the Board of Ed, the number one qualification is a willingness to step forward and volunteer. You all did it. You didn't come to the council knowing what to expect. You moved your way through the many policies, the rules, the budgets, and the issues, and you learned. You listened. You worked together. And both parties, all parties, come together for one outcome. Today, I'm here to remind you how you started, when you began on the council. You took the courage to say yes when you were asked to fill the Town Council seat. You didn't expect people to call you out because you were a woman, or a man, or any other human reason, or question your personal resume. You did it because you were willing to share your time and with the people of Enfield, and you were asked. Janet Cushman is a new volunteer for the Board of Education who came willingly to be part of the group. She is open-minded, has a wealth of experience, but the experience is different than others who are currently on the Board of Education. It doesn't make her less qualified. Many people have sat on the Town Council in the past and will come in the future. Their parents, their retired people, their college students, their business people, their stay-at-home caregivers, it all came not with a robust resume for the job, but a willingness to say yes to volunteering and giving back to Enfield. Try to remember your first day on the Town Council, and remember your willingness to say yes to run in your first election. And remember your willingness to learn how to do the job. And remember your willingness to volunteer. I want to thank you. I want to thank all of you for your willingness to make Enfield such a great place to live. And I appreciate your willingness to be kind and to be open-minded and be helpful to all the new people who will continue to come and cross your paths as new volunteers who will give their time to the Town of Enfield and its elected positions. Your time is valuable. Your willingness is appreciated. And all can have an opportunity to participate if given the opportunity. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the council?
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Davis, and I reside at 201 North Maple Street. Try to keep personal personalities out of it, but we'll see. First off, Chief, as I said, I've always-- will call you Chief, even though you're retired. Thank you for last council for speaking up. Took a lot, and you're right. So I'm here for a couple issues. One is the resolution on the attack on the Capitol. When I sat and watched that and comments that were made, I was baffled. Probably some harsher words. That is an attack on our Capitol, Washington, D.C., our Capitol to our country, to our nation. That hits home. And maybe not to people that took an oath of a blank check that's equivalent to your life to defend this country. But that is a sacred ground, and you are right, Chief. It's where our countries run. It's where everything happens. And how close it is to the White House, our other sacred building. And to compare it to anything else, that is where-- everybody went off about the violence all summer. That's all I heard from everybody when anything happened. No matter where it was in the country, you guys did say stuff when it was. But now we want to sit when it's an attack on the national Capitol to our country. Waving a flag in USA does not make you patriotic one bit. Defending this country most certainly does. What I don't get is why was it so hard? Because a lot of us wrote up trying to ask, mostly from the Republican Party, because the Dems already wrote where they stood, where do you stand on the attack of our Capitol? That's what we asked as residents. So I thought it would have went so smooth when I watched the council. Like, why would there be wanting to change it? And let's add everything else to it. So stance where you stood. And yes, they did try to overturn the election. The people voted. Over 7 million votes. More. It's not like, I understand you treasured Trump, and you bow to him. Fine. That is a position. No one is more important to anybody in this country, as Joe wants to say. So one man is not. The president's not. It's the position. The commander in chief. So when everybody wants to say Pelosi said this, this person said this, there's only one commander in chief that this whole country looks to, follows every word they say. So yes, I do have a problem with the resolution. And then when you want to then compare it to a lot, which no one has a right to kill anybody and burn stuff, you're comparing it to riots that took place because people were dying because of the color of their skin, to another group that overturned an insurrection of the Capitol, to overturn an election that the American people voted on, and then to question it. And I understand why your chair of the Republican, Marion Turner, does her comment that she was there coming home. It was peaceful. So we got to protect her, right? It's a Capitol to our country. So if we don't like our election in November, people could just storm here and want to overturn it, and it's okay? No. It's not. The Capitol to our country, our nation. Do we get that? And to compare it to anything else. You know, I got a million things to say, but I just can't because it hurts too much here. You did make it all political. It's an attack on our country's Capitol. What don't you see in that? Does it matter what side or political or what want to blame? It's an attack on our Capitol to the country. Thank you, Mr. Crisati, for wanting to put a resolution to make it known that you all stood against it. It wasn't a party thing. It was as a community, as a town, to take a stance. That's what it is. That's what it is. So thank you, even though we made it political. Oh, is that my beep? Because I'll come back, because I got so many more points to say.
Anyone else like to speak for the council? Anyone else? I declare public communications closed. Second round goes next time. We have one five... Yes. We have one five-minute rule. Everyone gets one five minutes, and then we go to the end of the meeting. That's the new policy and procedures.
It says two rounds, eight minutes max.
You changed the...
You changed it. All right. Well, that's what I'm seeing. Okay.
Okay. Anyone, we have three minutes, sorry. Anyone else like to go for three minutes?
Did you want to finish yours? Because you said you were ready to finish.
You're hot, go.
Well, I'm sure I could calm down a little first. You're messing with this country. I do have a problem with that.
So back with that, I'll thank you, Mr. Crisati, for doing that. I want to thank Gina, too. Thank you for taking a stance and being very public of where you stand. It means a lot that we do have some leaders that will take that stance for us.
Sorry, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Oh, I just did my half my speech. Want me to do it?
All right. I want to make sure you have three minutes.
Oh, do I say my name again? I'm Elizabeth Davis. I reside at 201 North Maple Street. Where I left off, thank you, Mr. Crisati, for putting a resolution that was going to be of all bipartisan. In my understanding, watching the meeting, it was bipartisan. You and the Chief worked on it. So when that was said in the meeting, I was like, this is going to go so great. This is going to be great. No. We act like DC. Like it was a joke to just tear out what Mr. Crisati even put in. We keep saying to unite, let's work together. It's hard to get DC to do it. In Hartford, there's more, but why can't you do it here? We're all Enfielders first. We're all supposed to love this town, as opposed to we love our country. So again, Gina, thank you for your comments, taking a stance, too, and making it known to the Enfield residents where you stand. Thank you on the attack on our great nation Capitol. Cindy, thank you for taking your stance and standing proudly with that. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I want to bring up one other thing since it was brought up prior with our new Board of Ed member. I do want to thank you, Gina, because I saw you get a lot of backlash on bringing the questions. Oh, but anyway, you are a parent of the schools, and so are we wanting to know what someone's credentials are, where they stand. That's not anything to say with a person. I mean, that's why I even went to the Board of Ed and asked, because I'd like to know a little bit. I wasn't mean. I didn't say you don't know nothing. But if us residents, parents of schools, and you're appointing somebody for the Board of Ed, we would like to know a little bit more about who's making decisions for our kids. I don't think that's too much to ask. And I'm sure there's more. So should have been said more. If only a couple of things are said about someone you're going to appoint, yes, people are going to get riled up. People are going to be like, what are you doing? Who are you actually putting in charge of our children's education? So I do want to thank you very much for standing for that and taking heat. A true leader every once in a while has got to take some heat for doing what's right. So I appreciate it. And she was nice to talk to, and she answered not all my questions, but kind of what the town council said. So I'm waiting to learn a little bit more, would be nice. So, but I really hope I didn't come here to stir up...
Twenty seconds.
I came here to say my piece of where I stand when it comes to our country. This country is everything. So I take the great pride in it, and I just want everybody else to, too, and not compare something like that, attack on our Capitol, to anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gina Sullivan, 11 Spear Avenue. How you doing, Jill? So I was listening on my way here, and I didn't plan on speaking tonight at all, because honestly, what's the point? But upon listening to Ms. Turner and what she spoke about again, because she said the same things at Board of Ed, willingness. There's a lot of good people willing to join committees to run for office. There's also a lot of the same willing people that have a big X on their back, myself included, because if you're not in the right place, or you're not liked by the right party, or the majority party, no matter what you've done in the past, like spent six years on a building committee for a high school, then suddenly you're not qualified or welcome to be on a middle school building committee. Not just myself, I've watched other people who may have owed $50 in taxes, that that was brought up and used against them. Another willing person. There's a lot of willing people, a lot of willing people of color that, for whatever reason, you know, doesn't always work out. So enough with the willing piece of it. She could save her time, save us all time, and just... It's a joke, is what it is. And for those of us that have tried to apply for things and were willing, didn't quite work out. So her statements really don't hold a lot of water. Thank you.
I really hope we can still be friends, even though we are opposed on this stuff.
I agree. We're all the same.
I know. Donna, thank you for getting this where we didn't have to wait for an hour or so. So I finished up talking about what was being done to the police officers around the country in many of these cities. And to continue, the burning of buildings and city blocks, the destruction of businesses and livelihoods, the looting, the attacks on people with two-by-fours, pipes, baseball bats, being blindsided by punches in the back of the head and the side of the head, the group kicking of defenseless people on the ground, et cetera. To use the words of a member of this council, there is absolutely nobody in this room that should be okay with that. You are the Enfield Town Council. You volunteer to do what you think is good for the town of Enfield. You can argue, you can debate, you can express yourselves, your opinions, you can listen to people that come before you. Then you vote, and then you move on. I implore you to stay out of national politics. Hopefully, you say... Hopefully, what you say at these meetings will be remembered in November. And finally, at your last meeting, a councilwoman said, and I quote, "He also applauds the Enfield Food Shelf for recently denying a donation to the Proud Boys, another right-wing extremist group. I am dismayed to think that charitable giving, donations, contributions, giving clothes and food, and et cetera, need to be in accordance with someone's political persuasion in order to give to those in need." The Proud Boys... Are the Proud Boys a right-wing extremist group? Apparently, in the eyes of some, they are. However, if that's the way you feel, let's be fair and call out Antifa. Call out Black Lives Matter, the organization, not the movement. The Cuban groups, the Marxist groups in this country, the revolutionary groups, the Black Panthers, the Black Liberation Army, the Puerto Rican separatist groups, the Southern Poverty Law Center, et cetera, et cetera. They're all extreme left groups. Thank you. Donna, thanks again for upping this. Well, that's not what I told this afternoon.
I think she's reading the... Those are old rules. Those are old rules. Yes. We changed them in April. Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Any other public communications? Hearing on, declare public communications closed, council communications. Anyone have any council communications? Counselor Bosco.
I'm not going to get into rant. So first off, I didn't serve in the military. I wish I did, but it doesn't make me love my country any less than anyone that's serving. Actually, there's probably people that are serving that don't love the country as much as I do. You talk about Washington being such a hollow place, and yeah, it is. But I didn't hear any resolutions when they stormed the Supreme Court for Brett Kavanaugh. I didn't see any resolutions when they were jumping the fence at the White House. I didn't see any resolutions when they burned a church right across the street. I didn't see any of this stuff. And next off, the Enfield Town Council does not belong in national politics. We are all here for the love of our town, and that's where it should stop. So, you know, like I said, you want to go with Washington and all that? Well, there was other things that happened, and people going over the fence, the Secret Service were out there with guns and trying to stop the people from tearing the fence down to get to the White House. So this has happened before in recent history. The problem is something like Mr. Genaita says, you've got to remember your history. And the problem is we're too busy erasing history, not remembering history. So that's where I want to go with that. And, you know, the next thing, I'm sort of a conspirator, I guess, but when you see cases of ballots after they close a polling place, get pulled out from underneath a table. Now, there could have been a perfectly legit reason for it. I'm not saying that that was something that was terrible or fraud, but when you can't get a court to look at something, it didn't happen. All they needed was a real court to look at all the evidence. And then, you know what? A lot of the frustration would have been quelled because maybe there was nothing wrong. There was no fraud. But when you can't get adjudicated, it never happened. So there is no proof, that's right, there was no proof of fraud, because it never went up and got adjudicated. And it wouldn't have took much for the court to look at it. You have places in Pennsylvania, they have more voters voting than they have voters, but yet the court won't look at it. So I understand you can say that it was an election, it's done, it's over. I'm going to have to accept Biden as my president because I don't have a choice in the matter. But these things should have been adjudicated. The Supreme Court should have looked at the stuff. They didn't. So we have what we have, and we're going to have to make all the best of it, and we need to get together, and we need to stop arguing, and we need to get together and pull again as a country to try to get ahead. But it's not just frivolous things that people think things were wrong. It should have went to court where all the evidence on both sides could have been put out on the table, and then at that point, you know, maybe I was wrong. But until someone can put the evidence out in court, it never happened. There was a business in town I know had 650 complaints that were all legitimized. The problem is, when it went to where it had to go, it went on a commissioner's desk and sat there for two and a half years. Well, the statute of limitation was two years. Well, guess what? That person never committed a crime because it was never adjudicated. And if they would have looked at it, there would have been big fines and penalties. But, you know, in America, we're innocent until proven guilty. So if you don't go and adjudicate it, or at least have both sides put their evidence out so everybody could see, of course, you're going to have sour grapes on both sides. So that's what I got for tonight on that. And the next thing is, I've been asked by a couple restaurants in town, are we going to be extending the outside dining? Because even if the governor's order lapses, is there something we can do, or do we have to do it, maybe in planning and zoning, to be a little proactive before the dining season comes, to extend a temporary order that people could have dining outside? Because a lot of these restaurants were really hurting, and they could use whatever they can have for, you know, to try to get a little bit of their money back. So I guess from the... From through the mayor to the town manager, if we could look and see if there's something we can do, and if it means that the town of Enfield has to bring it through to planning and zoning, that we do. And I'm not saying make it permanent forever, but at least another year would help a lot of people, because we don't really know what the uncertainty of COVID is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hamlin and Counselor Crisati.
A couple of things. I was over at the Annex today getting training so I could volunteer for the vaccine clinic and from the... To the mayor, to the town manager, I just wanted to say you and your staff did a bang-up job. I mean, it's very professional and just very, very proud to be from Enfield after seeing the whole setup and everything. So the other thing is, and this one's a little bit lengthy, so I'm sorry. Whatever the state legislature does, it kind of rolls downhill to our town. And right now, they're considering several bills that will change Connecticut in a very, very big way. One is recreational marijuana. I think medical marijuana is good medicine, and I support it. This has nothing to do with that. I think recreational marijuana is a mistake. And I know it looks like just a big pile of money to pick up and use as tax revenue, but I think the cost is actually too high, no pun intended. At this time, we can't even show our faces in public without a mask because of a virus that we may or may not come in contact with. So it doesn't make sense to me to make recreational marijuana legal where there's so many health implications, so many problems associated with the use. I've heard, well, other states are going to be doing it, and I think that's akin to, you know, what your mom always said, are you going to jump off the bridge because everybody else does? So I looked up on the CDC website, health-wise, smoking it is worse than cigarette smoke. The edibles has the possibility of accidental poisoning. It affects brain health. Short and long-term effects include memory, learning issues, attention, decision-making, coordination, reaction time, mental health. It causes anxiety, paranoia, depression, in worst cases, even psychosis. The public safety concerns with DUI, there isn't currently even a test to prove or disprove that somebody's under the influence. So I think that's huge. I mean, I'm already worried when I drive at night, or my daughter's going down to Middletown because she's in the Army Reserves. I'm always worried of somebody driving drunk and, you know, something happening, and to have the possibility of people out there under the influence of marijuana is even... It'll be an... It just would be a nightmare. So I think law enforcement would be difficult. Some arguments would be that it's better than alcohol. I disagree. I mean, somebody can go out and have a glass of wine and not be impaired, but I don't believe it's the same with marijuana. And the biggest thing is the effects on families, the effects on kids. It's huge. It's saying it's okay, and I believe it is a gateway drug. So I hope that anybody listening would consider and urge our Connecticut legislature to reconsider legalizing recreational marijuana. I think it's a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crisati, then Deputy Mayor Susa.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody that came up with their comments today during, you know, public communications. And, you know, I listen to everybody, and, you know, thank you for, you know, everything that was stated here tonight. There's a couple of things, side notes. Enfield Safe Harbor Warming Center is going to still be open until March 27th, especially, you know, with the weather that we have going on here. You know, St. Patrick's Church on Wednesdays and Sundays, open from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. I just want to just state that. But I do have to commend Monica Wright and her staff of the volunteers of the Safe Harbor Warming Center. She received a grant to house the homeless at a local motel here in town. So, you know, some of these homeless people didn't have to travel to Vernon, and they're able to help these people out. So I just would like to commend her for her hard work that she's been doing over these past several years. Another thing that I would like to mention is, you know, everybody that's sitting here on the council, we're all concerned about everybody's emotional well-being of our residents and isolated residents. I'm just urging everybody to go check on their neighbors on occasion, see how I'm just urging everybody to go check on their neighbors on occasion, see how they're doing. You know, it's still a very difficult time. You know, everybody's concerned about, you know, everybody's emotional well-being during this timeframe. Just notified this past afternoon that the Enfield High School Student Council is instituting a, a mental health initiative. And the reason why I'm bringing it up is that, you know, students are struggling with mental health during the pandemic and, you know, with the hybrid learning environment. And there are students that are slipping through the cracks. The administration has noticed that the student council is asking businesses in town for donations for what they're going to be sending out to, to students. They're going to be calling it mental health care packages. So I'm just, you know, any business owner who would like to make a donation to this worthy cause that's going on, and I think it's a worthwhile cause, you know, you can contact Ms. Dolan, Ms. Grou, or Mr. Clark over at, at the high school. What they're looking for is their, you know, whether it's, you know, gift cards or, you know, gift certificates from restaurants or something like that, you know, even gym, gym memberships or anything like this. But they're looking for donations and I think it would be a, a good cause. But I wanted to mention it tonight in terms of, you know, mental health during this time. You know, it's affecting everybody. It's affecting all families and it's affecting our students, you know, the, the parents. A lot of stress that, that's going on. I listened to the, the Board of Ed meeting the other day and there was a couple of parents that came in front, in front of everybody. And they talked about their struggles and I get that. So I think that if we're cognizant of that and we have an opportunity to help somebody, help a neighbor, I think that's something that, that, that we should do. And, you know, maybe I, I should, I'll shoot an email out to everybody. Maybe we can put a couple of care packages together here as a council and send it over, which I think would be a nice gesture. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
You know, first of all, I want to thank Chris for reaching out to deep on the Scantic River Park. Always a problem every year. The parking there is designed for passive recreation use, so the 10 spots is what's deemed, you know, appropriate for that park. And we'll, we'll see if we can keep everybody, you know, on the same ground rules and as we did last year. And I think it worked out very well and I thank you for that. Also, very proud to be in Enfield there with Lori, Carl, Kelly, Cindy, Mike, all over to see the clinic. Huge, huge undertaking by Trinity Health. Trinity Health has really been a good partner in Enfield. We have some really wonderful facilities right in town as well, as well as Hartford Healthcare as well. But I guess for me, what I want to talk a little bit about is the system, the VAM system that you will be using to register. It's going to get an influx. The minute they open up a new group, take a breath. Take a breath, go on two days later, sign yourself up. Sometimes it'll, you'll get the email back right away that you, for, to complete your registration. Sometimes it takes four days. But just keep looking for it. Go on there, use the site. If things look like they're too far away, their site's opening up all the time. I guess patience and persistence is a virtue when it comes to using this. And it's really important for everybody to get out there, get your vaccine. Wherever you go to for your first, you'll be going for the second. Whatever you got the first time, you'll get the second time. And we have a third one that's a single shot, which I think that's going to be a, a big improvement. And I think, you know, for a lot of places in our country, you know, rural areas, it's hard enough to get two shots. The one shot will be as good as, as, as Dr. Fauci says, all of them are good. Just get your vaccine and just be patient and kudos to Enfield and the staff and Chris and everybody who worked on getting that there. And also I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M to miscellaneous and proceed to vote. Thank you.
Motion made, second by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing anybody show hands, all those in favor. Opposed, extension, extensions, 10 in favor, zero against of moving to miscellaneous, Sheila. Motion passes. Counselor Mangini.
Just, I don't want to take up too much of everybody's time, but I do want to thank our town staff for the clinic that opened up today. Joe Courtney came and a lot of other dignitaries along with the Trinity Health. It really was impressive to see how well organized, how the setup was. I know Bob was there, Donna was there, Carl, many, Lori was there. And I know some of us are volunteering, you know, this week and next week. It, it really is a good thing that we have this opportunity and we can help others and speed up the process. So thank you to our town and to staff.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I declare council communication closed. Item nine, town manager communication report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening to everybody. We did have a very good grand opening this morning of the Trinity Healthcare Clinic at the annex. We reached out to Johnson Memorial Hospital, which has been a good partner with us and our EMS service and paramedic service for decades. They're receptive, put us in touch with Trinity Healthcare and the rest is history. It's a lot of hard work. You were out there and I think folks who go to visit it or go online will see what an undertaking it was. And I, I have to, and I'd be remiss not to thank a couple of individuals who did a Herculean effort above and beyond. And that's Deb McCarthy, you know, she's our executive secretary in my office, but also she's our public information officer. She literally worked 24 hours a day, seven days a week for, for two weeks to get this up and running. You know, COVID, we didn't have a handbook as to how to deal with it. We certainly didn't have an instruction manual as to how a town would help administer medical services. But we've risen to the occasion. Mark Gar from Building and Grounds, his staff, you saw all of the physical improvements that had to be made there, all of the stations, the connections, the computers, huge undertaking. They turned it around in seven days. We went out there and walked around and looked. And I'll tell you, Trinity was impressed. They've done these across the state and they said our, our staff and what we accomplished is second to none. So you should be very proud. And you should be very proud and the residents should be because this council authorized it. This is a huge undertaking and commitment of resources. Folks should know that Trinity committed, this is a permanent mass vaccination center. Eighty staff members will be there every day. And they asked if we would step up and commit to 10 people a day. So that's been a whole nother effort apart, just to get volunteers. And I thank all of you who have wanted to do it. It's going to be a sustained effort. This is going to go through June, five days a week. But the result will be that we're offering this to our residents who can be here in town and be able to avail themselves of it. And up to 640 people a day, you know, well over 3,500 people a week. That's an incredible result, especially now when the vaccine is coming. And I thank you, Donna, for your comments because we already saw today, there's sometimes misunderstanding. The press and then the releases say we'll call the town to schedule an appointment. Please don't. We don't have the ability to do it. You've got to go through VAMS. It's just too overwhelming. We'd have to set up an entire operations center. So please don't come out if you don't have an appointment. You know, unfortunately, there's unscrupulous people who tell you, go online at the end of the day, show up and come in and they'll give you a, you know, a leftover or a, you know, an inoculation because they have extra. That's not so. They won't do that at the clinic. So please don't do that. And as Donna said, the governor was on today. Connecticut is in the top five for vaccinations and we expect more because we are distributing it in mass locations such as the clinic today. And he, as you said, Donna said, have patience. Within three weeks, all the people in the eligible classes to date will have an opportunity to get the vaccination. So I know everybody's anxious and they want to do it and spring is going to be in the air, but we'll get it done. And I'm just so thankful for all of our collaborative effort in getting this to our, to our folks. I'll also tell you, this isn't the only one. Kasia is going to give a report in a moment. We had done previously one with the health district at the senior center with great success. And we have another one Wednesday scheduled. It's already fully committed, over 200 people, their largest in the district. Again, predominantly Enfield people will be availing themselves of that. So we really have been able to step up and provide this to our citizenry and I'm, I'm just very proud of our staff. Couple of other things that have come up. There was an issue with the air handlers. You know, we have done maintenance and all of our air handlers are maxed out. They've been cleaned, they've been upgraded. It will be part of an ongoing process because as Mr. T. Katz said, like many things in town, they're antiquated. And it is something we will look to, to have a schedule going forward of replacing them and addressing that issue. But given COVID, all of the CDC guidelines that were recommended, Public Works has been out there in Building and Grounds, they've been doing that. We're excited. As Donna mentioned, we have the Colonel of the Deep coming, Environmental Protection. The Chief, Chief Fox, reached out. They came out to the park last year. We had a great discussion. They really upgraded their enforcement with great success. So we figured let's do it again before Memorial Day. So they'll be coming to the meeting, I forget which, they've chosen in May, the first or the second. We'll get it out there. And it's more than just, it'll be all of their personnel that are responsible for the park. And I think that'll be good, as Donna said, to get ahead of it this year. After that, water pollution control, it's exciting. We'll tell you that we did complete our $43 million upgrade. Donald's going to have a brief report if we have time on that. And we also have scheduled, we're hopeful, June 18th, we're going to have a ribbon cutting. We've invited the governor. His, his staff said that he believes he'll be available and he would love to join us for that. So we're looking forward to that. And next meeting, two weeks from tonight, March 15th, we have the Department of Transportation coming to do a full presentation on the final design and engineering of the Enfield train platform. And it couldn't have come at a better time with what's going on in Washington and infrastructure investment to have this project ready to go and designed is incredible. Also, I'm very, very, and more confident than ever that we're going to see that station come to fruition in the near future. The town attorney will address restaurants. The governor has said this evening, he is, at the end of the week, opening up and lifting many restrictions on restaurants, Joey, so that may lay concerns. On other areas, the town attorney will have to look because a lot of the executive orders were limited. We don't have independent power at all to extend them. That was such as the taxes, that we had a, a certain window to, to extend payment and we didn't have independent authority to go beyond that. So he can review that and we can have a report if he knows this evening, because he knows a lot, he can tell you. Otherwise, we, we can get that information to you and to our businesses shortly. I think that's it. I'm going to have to, because for the, take the thunder for Donald, I'm afraid. In regard to water pollution control, Donald, you know, you apply for credits. You get credits when you upgrade because of, you know, energy consciousness. So out at the Water Pollution Control Center, it was assessed by Eversource. We thought we were going to get a credit from them in a range of about $90,000 to $100,000. They just contacted Donald to inform him what the, after they did their audit, what that would be, a check being sent to the town of Enfield because of our efforts there and our investment. And Donald, what was the final amount?
So the final amount is $502,896.32. That is just for, just for our pumps and some of our other, and for the blowers. We still are going to be receiving some incentives for our building envelope, our slug pump station and headworks and the A-trac systems. But that is still yet to be evaluated, but as of right now, again, $502,896.32.
And isn't that incredible? Because we had the foresight to invest into that facility, the savings that we're going to realize and the efficiencies and the ability to expand it and businesses and residences in town, but also half a million dollars for our efforts. I think it's incredible and thank you, Donald. Job well done. And we'll be needing that and using that towards other investments there at the plant. With that, I'd like to turn it over for a report on the, a couple of matters. Kasia?
Good evening, Town Council. So I wanted to give a quick update on the building consolidation plan. So there's been quite a lot of progress made in the past few weeks. Myself personally, we've completed a lot of successful walkthroughs through the proposed building changes with different staff. Many of the plans have been finalized for the whole building consolidation project. Alcorn specifically, because that's a really big one. We met with social services staff and the architect. So we're in the process of finalizing that design, which is really great news. And work on the Enfield Express is actually anticipated to begin March 15th, so that's coming up really soon. But what I really wanted to share tonight was some accomplishments that were placed over the past week. As of Thursday, February 25th, the Recreation Department has moved fully into the Enfield Annex. So the move was very successful and hit all the timeline marks. If you happen to visit the annex now, you'll see a big sign that says Recreation Department on the front doors. So now as a reminder, all the rec programming will be located in one location, same location as their summer. And I was personally there before the construction took place, during, when it was going on and now after. And I have to say, it really does look amazing. And again, this was all done, done in-house by Public Works, the Buildings and Grounds, and they did just a remarkable job. And in addition, Buildings and Grounds finished the renovation at the senior center ahead of schedule for the transportation offices from social services to move in. And they moved in there on Friday, February 26th last week. So they renovated their large open space to create an office for the Transportation Program Manager and they created workspaces for all the staff that joined her over there. And again, this move allows all our transit vehicles to be in one location and it will really streamline services for our transportation department. So I just wanted to say thank you again to the town council for making this consolidation plan happen. It's so exciting that, you know, we're able to put all these ideas into play. And a special thank you to Public Works. They really, Buildings and Grounds has done an outstanding job. All of Donald and Jeffrey's team has done an outstanding job and they're working so quickly. And I'm really impressed with what I'm seeing. And when this is all completed, I'm going to put together a presentation to show all of town council and the public, really just the before and after of what they've accomplished during the short time. So that's what I have on the building consolidation project. And I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Chris said with the senior center clinic. So as Chris said, we're partnering with the North Central District Health Department, again, this upcoming Wednesday at the senior center from 10 to 4 to host the vaccination clinic. And again, this clinic is appointment only, no walk-ins are accepted. And the town, again, was not responsible for making appointments for this clinic. It is going through, you have to go through VAM. So as Chris mentioned, they will be vaccinating 180 people and those spots have been fully taken at this point. So again, I just want to say thank you to Max Carroll, Patrice Solik of the Health Department for their cooperation, working with us to bring this machine service to Enfield. And also a special thank you to all our staff involved. Again, we'll have the EMS there for the observation room. Our police department has represented, Public Works, Buildings and Grounds, again, have the, done a fantastic job preparing the setup and breakdown of, of the layout there. Social Services is on site as well to assist our residents in anything that may arise there. And again, of course, the staff at the senior center for making this all happen. They've accommodated their schedules, they've gone hybrid to accommodate the clinic and it really is wonderful, all of us working together to, to bring this service down. So that's, that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Building and Grounds was able to do all that in their spare time from building the clinic. So I thank them. You know, when we do those things, they're still doing all the other work that they're tasked to do and they love the town. And a lot of them live in the town. And not that that's a prerequisite, but it really shows. And to that point, our next speaker is going to give you an update in a moment. But I want to say, I, I love working here. I love working with each and every one of you. I've worked with Liz. I worked with Mary Ann Turner. I've worked with and respect Gina. And you know what? It's important that we come and that's what the First Amendment is all about. That's why you're all here. That's why people love this country. That's why people are in the military or do the public service and the volunteering that they do. And we have to be able to work together. And I like what Peter said to Liz at the end, well, you know, I love you, Liz, basically, and we'll get along even though we may have differences of opinion. And that's what makes us great. And that's why I want to stay here. And that's why I love Enfield. And that started, the first night I started, 32 years ago, when Bob T. Katz, when I was the newly minted 29-year-old town attorney, got up and challenged me and said, what about this? Do you have an answer? And I want to know right now. And I loved Enfield from that point forward and I still do. So that's what makes us great. But we need to, again, look what we did tonight, look what we've accomplished. And I know all of you love Enfield and you love your country. And sometimes we say it in different manners and sometimes we get passionate and upset because I'm not guilty of that. You know, I always keep my cool and I never lose my temper. The Irish in me, I keep it at bay. But no, I want us to remember that and I want us to come together. We're going to do great things. Just look at the things I've outlined to you that we're doing, what Kasia said with building consolidation, building, bringing clinics to our town, state-of-the-art water pollution control, a train platform, a Higgins Park, a potential pool and water park, basketball courts, garden courts, garden plots, tearing down the old, building the new. I mean, it is incredible what all of the people of this town can look forward to. And that's what makes us great too, our residents. And those people who care enough to come out here in the cold, when it's whipping wind 50 miles an hour, and speak their piece. That's what brings us here. That's what makes us great as Americans. And that's why I want Steve Belinda now to give you some news, and I wanted to talk about that now before he tells you what his report is. So thank you, and God bless you, and God bless our residents. And I mean it. I love you and I love this town and I love our residents from the bottom of my heart. Steve?
You got something better than that? Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Town Attorney.
Name and title, please.
Pardon me. Is that better?
Name and title.
Oh, sorry. Steve Belinda, Director of Human Resources, Town of Enfield, Connecticut.
Welcome.
Good evening all, and to the residents themselves. So I drove in this morning, fully prepared to attend previously scheduled Town Manager Personnel Search Committee until it was abruptly canceled. And I was thinking, as I was driving in, boy, this is going to be a daunting task for all of us here. Not necessarily daunting because it's going to be difficult to find a new town manager that we come to love and revere, although that is true. But it's daunting because it's going to be difficult to find a town manager that has vision, energy, and business acumen, as in Chris Bronson, and just, you've seen it in display a myriad of times. So look around, you, you see what's going on. Just this morning, I was at the mass clinic, mass vaccination clinic in the Annex, and spearheaded by Chris Bronson, and it's, we are pioneers in so many ways. I brag to my former town where I used to work, the things that we're doing. It really is, is fun to be on this ride here, on these coattails of Chris Bronson and what we're doing. So quite simply, Chris Bronson is moving mountains, and you don't change a horse in midstream. And thankfully for you guys, and both parties at the Town Council, you realize you have a thoroughbred when you see one. I, I don't know else to say.
All right, Steve, wrap it up. Because we don't have enough shovels.
I love you, ma'am, but it's okay, you're not getting a pay increase.
You got any more jokes?
No, 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 no.
You're doing a heck of a job.
So having said, it's hard to read your writing here. No, no. But, 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 and seriously, so in your infinoism, you somehow collaboratively worked your magic, but I'm, I'm pleased to say that Chris Bronson is going to stay here for at least one more year. I spoke to our recruiter. The first thing she said was, that makes a lot of sense, because it's very difficult to hire a town manager right before a Town Council election. So this is actually a good move in a lot of ways. I, I came prepared today for talking about salaries and other town managers, I don't have to worry about that now. So this, this is, this is really good news for everyone, because the, the timing wasn't right on many ways, and, and I, I know I couldn't have them this day, but whatever you guys did, thank, thank you on behalf of all the town residents and employees that work here. That's all I got.
Someone's got to have a question for Steve.
Please, I hope so.
Counselor Mangini?
We're all feeling the love for you, Chris.
Good. That's what we want to feel. And even though Steve overdid it, and I'm embarrassed as hell, I thank him for his sentiment, and that's how I feel about the council. But, but thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Right, I think your point this morning, I mean, again, it's, it's historic what's, people don't realize what we're doing, and it's because the, I mean, the people, the staff through Chris, but again, it's the whole staff. I mean, you, you talk about delivering quality health care, again, the access is the key. Access to quality health care is the key, and that's what we're doing as a municipality, working with a major healthcare system. Yes, I know it's focused on vaccines, but it really is, we are now part of a, the delivery of health care, which again, opens up some access to people who may not have had it. And that's, that's pretty, pretty wild, if you think about it. And again, I know, you know, through Chris and the staff, and, and of course, our partners with Trinity Health in New England, who have been fantastic. I mean, really, this is historic stuff that we can build on, and really, you know, as through the nor, through Northern Connecticut, really be a good neighbor to maybe some other towns who don't have, you know, the, the location that Enfield has. I mean, I think that's the key of what we did this morning, and obviously through Chris and to the staff. And again, I know we can talk about, we can talk about the train stop and all those other really good things. I mean, really, today was a pretty big day.
You know, Mayor, it's a tribute to all those names up there. It is. Nobody can do this alone, and with all of you sitting here, and I mean that, you're only as good as your team, and we have a great team. And they continue to impress me and amaze me, and our residents should be, and I think they are. I think they're pleased because it's the customer service they receive, the respect. And we've done a heck of a job over the last three years, and so has the council, to bring us to this level. So thank you. And, you know, Steve, I appreciate it, but we, we need to get these things done over the next year. We'll look, when COVID's behind us, when the consolidation is done, and we're in a really good position, and then we'll go out there and we'll get the best, you know, rootin' tootin' town manager in the United States to, who will, that'll be beaten down the door to come here with all that we've accomplished. And that's my hope and my, my goal. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate the laugh. Much needed.
It's fun working here.
Much needed. Moving on to Item 10, Town Attorney Report. Attorney Talbert.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just one brief reminder. Saturday, March 6th, there is a presentation, a full-day seminar that we have 12 members from Enfield participating entitled "Connecticut Land Use Law for Municipal Land Use Agencies, Boards, and Commissions." It is specifically designed for the volunteers who serve on our ZBA, PCC, wetlands. Full-day presentation. We just got the materials, so if there are any members who can't make it, we have the 491-page A to Z. This is everything you'd ever want to know about municipal land use. We have copies of it, and we can make them available for anybody who can't be there. Counselor Bosco, we're also looking at, with regard to your question about as the executive orders are rolled back, today is an important day. March 1 is the first rollback of one of the important executive orders that pertain to statutes of limitation. So for the past year, any statute of limitation roughly that was about to expire was suspended, and as of today, it's no longer suspended. There are various groups getting ready for these rollbacks. For example, CAMA, the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys, is looking at very closely, most importantly, things like these remote and hybrid meetings, and asking the governor's staff what is going to happen next, because many agencies want to continue using either full remote or hybrid proceedings. The governor has a 50-page piece of legislation that's been proposed. It's coming right from the governor's office, so you suppose there's a lot of support for it. I haven't seen one yet. That, that legislation I'm talking about is specific to FOI changes to allow for these types of meetings to occur. I haven't seen one yet with regard to restaurants, but I had heard about things like restaurants being allowed to sell liquor to go, drinks to go, allowing that to continue to spur sales. So I suspect there's going to be another piece of legislation that's going to come out, that's going to address the restaurants, and try to keep some of the positive improvements that have come out of the silver lining from this pandemic. So I will report back to you at the next meeting. We'll do some further inquiry on that.
And I guess, if, let's say the governor pulls that back, that part of it back, is it something that we could do a temporary, you know, year-to-year thing or whatever on our planning and zoning to allow this? Or does it, would it have to go through planning and zoning? Or, you know, something that the town of Enfield can initiate to try to help our businesses?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to research that. I, I know they made dramatic changes in most municipalities to allow the outdoor dining. Some municipalities had already gotten ahead of that, you know, West Hartford, for example. They had a big section on part of town where they had a lot of outdoor dining. So we'll research that and get back to you. If it's not something that's covered by executive order, maybe it is something that we could run through the land use agencies.
Any other questions for the town attorney? Thank you, appreciate it. Item 11, report of any special committees.
Yeah.
Counselor Mueller.
I have an update on JFK. Some of it, we talked about last time, but the Blue Wing was turned over to the school. The teachers and students were moved in the week of February 14th. White Wing demolition abatement for White Wing began the week of the 14th and continues to be ongoing. Classroom offices in the White Wing were moved out to Blue Wing, Green Wing, or other swing space. The Black Wing, the ceiling grid's gone in, the MEP fixtures and millwork are underway. The auditorium and library area, the overhead aid in the wall, MEP install are ongoing, and the exterior siding is being installed as well. The fitness and expanded cafeteria area, the overhead and in-wall MEP install are ongoing. Drywall and painting are also ongoing in that area. And the kitchen and cafeteria, the overhead MEP roughens are continuing in both areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bosco.
Yeah, there's a mayor and town manager. We had a meeting for the roads referendum, and we have some recommendations for some new direction on our roads. We're doing all our roads the same exact way. And, you know, there's, you have a very limited street with not a lot of traffic. It's sort of crazy to put all drainage in and, and put crush, all that crushed stone. So what we'd like to do is, we spoke at our caucus, and we were mentioning that our thing is maybe to change the way we're addressing some of these roads. You know, instead of doing everything the same, you know, if there's no curb there now, and it doesn't need a curb, just fix the road. At least this way, we can do more road, because, you know, we, we weren't getting a lot of road done. There were still a lot of roads that were 60 and under. And, and a lot of them roads right there, even if we have to do a mill and pay, or reclaim and pave, and just use the material there just to make the roads passable, you know, that's something else we have to start looking at, because, you know, you can't have people with gravel roads. And some of the roads are just about there, so, you know, just grind them, mill them, pave them, at least they can get another 10, 15 years. You know, some of them roads are there 50 years before they look the way they are, so we want to look at another approach. And that way, I, I told Donald not to do what he was doing till we talked to see if, you know, that was a direction that we wanted to go, because, you know, why waste his energy? So we have a new direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, moving on to Item 12, Old Business, on page one. Items A, 1 and 2 remain tabled. Under Old Business, Items 3 through 15, again, remain tabled. Items 16 on page 3 remain tabled. Old Business appointments to Town Manager. Items 1 through 12, again, no appointments but a Town Manager, they remain tabled. Items for, under Old Business, Items under Town Manager Appointment, 13 through 16, again, remain tabled. There are no appointments in C, in Old Business. P&amp;Z Commission Appointed Counsel approved. Item D, MOU of the Fire Districts remains on the table. Item 13, New Business. Item A, Consent Agenda, there is none. Item B1, again, there's just a resignation. Item B2, that'll be taken up at the next meeting. Item C, Appointment, Town Manager, again, none. Item D, Appointments, P&amp;Z Commission Appointed Counsel Approved, there are none. Items for Discussion, Item A, Consent Agenda, there is none. Item B, Appointments for the Town Council, under Items for Discussion, there are none. Item C, Town Manager Appointment, Counsel Approved, again, there are none. Item D, P&amp;Z Appointed, Counsel Approved, there are none. Items E through M have been moved to miscellaneous. And we moved to miscellaneous. And under, Item E, under miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution, Request for Transfer Funds for Community Development, CDBG Laurel Park Grant of $175,000. Resolving the accordance of Chapter 6, Section 8, F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to the Community Development, to Laurel Park, Other Professional Services, $175,000, from Community Development. Laurel Park Revenue of $175,000. Certified the above funds are available as of February 19, 2021, by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our Town Manager.
So moved.
Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Hemler. I mean, this is something, I know we've been kind of.
Yeah, I know we've, we've gone through a lot this evening. So quite briefly, this is previous, Nelson worked and applied for a grant through the state and was successful in getting $175,000 for upgrades to the Enfield Housing Authority and at Laurel Park, and this is just permitting him to expend the money, and the next resolution just says it would be carried over if they don't complete the improvements into the next fiscal year. That's all.
Do we have any idea when they have the work scheduled? I mean, because this has been on, I think we've worked on this. I know Nelson got, I think it was one of the first things he got when he got, when he got appointed. So just curious what their timeframe is to finish this work.
Nelson's nodding. Nelson has, has revealed himself.
Go ahead, Nelson, sorry.
Good evening, Town Council. The Enfield Housing Authority, we're going out to bid this month. We finalized the bid package, everything's good to go. The work's going to be started this spring and done before the end of the summer.
And that's the need to carry over any money, just because it may, it may trump budget? Yeah, right.
Correct. And the fact of the matter is, the money's coming from the state, you have the requisition for the money.
Right.
So.
So people know they might carry over into another budget. Now, perfect, so good. I mean, Blue Stant, I know you get this, one of your first grants, but just make sure that, you know, when they complete the work that we know, it'd be nice to, and it'll get that work completed.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Nelson or the Town Manager? Hearing none, roll call, please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sifaza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Angier?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sakala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
That's 10 in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Sheila. We move on to Item F, under Discussion, under Miscellaneous, that's Discussion Resolution, Resolution to Authorize the Carry Forward Unspent Funds from the CDBG Laurel Park Grant. Resolve that the Finance Director is authorized to carry forward unspent, carry forward unspent funds from the Laurel Park Grant. SC 1904901, Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 Appropriations. Revenue and Expenditure Accounts in Organization Code 23376004 into the next fiscal year until all monies are spent, submitted on February 19, 2021, by the Office of Community Development.
So moved.
By Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. And just what we just talked about, this is actually, this is just to make sure if the work carries over, same thing.
Correct.
Any questions, Nelson? I don't know, Nelson, just, I know you're on, I know you just answered a question, but if you want anything else?
He's answered, I can think.
Yeah, nothing else bad.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sifaza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Angier?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
He stepped out, Sheila.
Okay, Counselor Sakala?
Four.[1644.73]
Counselor Chrisati.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
That's nine in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Sheila. Again, well, under miscellaneous, item G, discussion resolution, request transfer funds for community development, CDBG COVID grant of $218,748. Resolve that in accordance with chapter six, section eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made to community development from the CDBG COVID other professional services of $218,748 from the community development, CDBG COVID revenue fund of $218,748. Certified the above stated funds are available as of February 19, 2021 by our director of finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson.
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak.
This is the same scenario. This is a grant that Nelson was successful in receiving. It's a pass through to the food shelf to help offset the consequences of COVID. It's allowing the expenditure. And then the second part, like the last two resolutions is to carry it over if they don't spend it all in this fiscal year.
Nelson, I don't know if you want to comment? I mean, you, I know you did a nice job getting these funds, so I want to make sure you get, if you have any comments.
No, we're working with the executive director at the food shelf. We are under contract for the grant. We're, we signed off on the contract documents, awaiting for the state's final execution of documents, but we're sitting with the project.
Thank you, sir. Again, good work on this. We appreciate it. Any comments or questions from any counselor? Hearing none, roll call please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Sifrazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
G. G. Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Chrisati.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
That's 10 in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Sheila. Under miscellaneous, we moved to item H, discussion resolution, resolution authorized to carry forward unspent funds for the CDBG COVID grant. Resolve that the finance director is authorized to carry forward unspent funds from the CDBG COVID grant account SC 2004903 fiscal year 2020, 2021 appropriations, revenue and expenditure accounts in organizational code 23376005 into the next fiscal year until all the monies are spent, submitted on February 19, 2020 by the Office of Community Development.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor, Counselor Hemler, and second by Counselor Mangini. Any, I mean, we just talked, any questions on this?
I looked at the package.
Sheila, roll call please.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Sifrazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Chrisati.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
That's 10 in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Sheila. Again, under miscellaneous, item I, discussion resolution, a resolution waiving bid requirements for the installation and removal of equipment in police vehicles, whereas the Enfield Police Department has a need to install and remove police equipment from the police vehicles, excuse me, when a department acquires new vehicles or when vehicles need repairs or being decommissioned. Whereas previously, the Enfield Police Department provided three new vehicles to MHQ in Middletown, Connecticut, and three vehicles to Competitive Services Solutions, parentheses, CSS, in South Windsor, Connecticut, and asked them to install the same equipment. They were each advised that they were competing against each other for quality of installation, reliability, timeliness, and professionalism. That the vehicles given to C, that CSS were completed faster and with no defects while the vehicles completed by MHQ took far longer and had to be required, it had to be returned to MHQ multiple times, repair basic installation errors, and at least one issue with water entering the vehicle and sorting the, and sorting out the equipment. Whereas the Enfield Police Department has used CSS for over a decade, and CSS is the only vendor that with, with intimate knowledge of every vehicle in a police department's fleet, CSS has provided service above and beyond, and that seen the other vendors, excuse me, CSS has provided service above and beyond that scene with, with other vendors. CSS will come to the department to repair vehicles on site when necessary, does not have a delay in processing repairs, works well with Enfield's fleet maintenance department. Enfield, the police department staff can contact, contact CSS after hours when necessary, and CSS is frequently available at a moment's notice. Furthermore, CSS only has one installer who knows, has, only has one installer knows our vehicles inside and out, and has been recently certified to install the department's new Axon camera equipment. CSS has frequently come to Enfield Fleet Maintenance to remove useful equipment from heavy damaged vehicles that would otherwise need to be towed at an expense to the town and for equipment removal. Whereas travel time to MHQ is roughly four minutes without traffic, while the drive to CSS is roughly 20 minutes. When making multiple trips for repairs and picking up new vehicles, the extra 40 minutes round trip can impact department staffing levels since we need to pull officers from their normal work to make these trips. Whereas MHQ has awarded the state Connecticut contract for such work, CSS bills at the same rate at state of Connecticut contracted price, contracted price for such work. Now therefore, be it resolved in accordance with chapter six, section eight, paragraph D of the Enfield Town Charter, the Enfield County, Enfield Town Council does hereby determine that is against the best interest of the town to require competitive bidding for installation and removal of equipment in and out of the police vehicles, submitted on February 16, 2021 by Sergeant Matthew Meyer.
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. I know the chief is here, Chris.
The chief is here. It's been reviewed by legal and the chief is available for questions.
Chief Fox, welcome. You have the floor, sir. If you have any comments or anything you'd like to relay on this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, as always, for the opportunity to join you. That rather robust resolution, I think, well describes what we're asking for. But in summary, Competitive Service Solutions is an, is an organization and an individual that we have a long-term relationship with that is valued. He is charging the state rate. He just is not on the state contract, and we believe that we are getting a superior product from him, adding in the proximity, adding in the fact that he'll make house calls to the police department when we need him to, but it was necessary and the time had come to formalize this as a, as a bid waiver request for your approval. I would ask your, your favorable response to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for the chief? Counselor Hemler.
Sounds like a win-win.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Sifrazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Chrisati.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
That's 10 in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Sheila. We move on to item J, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, resolution to increase the Board of Education appropriation for fiscal year 2021, for 2021, excuse me. Whereas on May 20, 2020, the Enfield Town, the Enfield Town budget adopted a total school appropriation of $71,691,866. Whereas the adopted budget was amended, as amended included estimates of educational funding from the state of Connecticut for what is known as the ECS Cost Grant, education cost sharing of $28,768,258 in account 10040000-413300. And whereas the adopted budget of the state Connecticut increased funding for the education cost sharing by $417,656, whereas the town of Enfield will receive a net increase of $417,656 in educational funding from the state of Connecticut. Whereas the town of Enfield desires to increase the appropriation to the town of, to the town of Enfield Board of Education by the account of $400,017,656, $417,656, which is the net increase in education funding from the state of Connecticut. Now therefore, be it resolved, the town council of the town of Enfield hereby approves the $417,656 increase in a total school appropriation to $72,109,522. Be it further resolved, the town of Enfield adopted budget for the educational cost sharing count 10040000-4133300 will be increased by $417,656.
So moved.
Second.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini.
This is a matter best discussed by John Wilcox.
You know, John, I mean, real quick, I mean, remember, this is part of what we've, you know, when the board, we allowed them to have a contingency fund, which I think is now 2% of their budget. You know, we also agreed that when we made our budget, if, if more money came in from the state specifically for the ECS Cost Grant, we would simply pass that money through, and that's exactly what this is. So go ahead, sir.
The, the state budget had not been passed, and they still haven't adjusted anything from the state budget. Typically, in year two, they will adopt modifications to the second year of the budget, and they haven't. So we're assuming that the second year of the, of their education cost sharing, which was part of their original biennial budget, is going to be followed. And I talked to CCM, they have not heard any issues with that. Talked to Chris Trezick, he has not heard any, anything otherwise. We checked with Manchester and with Buffield, and they've both adopted the increase as part of the minimum budget requirement for the, for the schools. So rather than hold off and wait for anything more, we decided that we put this forward for your, for your approval.
As if last minute, the state changes their mind. Do we have to give them the whole money we plan on, that we say we're going to give them right now?
Well, I just, you know, the problem is that if we wait until June, I mean, that's when we would know. Excuse me. And, you know, they, they wouldn't have any time to adopt that or incorporate it into their budget.
It's this year's budget.
That's correct.
Correct. So I, I think this has already been appropriated by the state. It just, they didn't, they didn't actually, so I, again, from my timing, they didn't do this earlier in 2020. It's simply now it's time for us, you know, right, to allocate the money over now that the state has appropriated it.
Exactly.
Yeah. So that's, it's, it's this current budget, not next year's current budget, to be clear for everybody. And again, this is to remind everyone, we made, we made an agreement or, or a cooperation, whatever word you want to use, with the Board of Education, I think it was two years ago, where again, they have two, now I think it's 2% of their budget where they can hold a contingency. And we agreed when we made, you know, again, when we come to, we'll do the similar this year, where if they get more money, we assume, we use round numbers, say we assume a million dollars of ECS Cost Grant coming into our, our budget that goes to the board, and they get a million four, we've agreed to pass that $400,000 in round numbers, as we're doing here, into the board budget. That's all this is. So just remind everyone, we made that agreement two years ago.
I agree with that, but what, my, my point is, if they short us $100,000, is the Board of Ed going to give us back that $100,000? You know, or do we have some type of agreement with them? Because, I mean, to me, that's a little iffy to play that game.
The minimum budget requirement from the, the, part of the, passes part of the state budget requires that we pass on any increases in the education cost sharing grant to the Board of Education. So what we did this, this past spring was we adopted the budget and included no increase in the education cost sharing grant, and we included no increase in the Board of Education budget at all. We do that in the past when the state has not adopted their budget by the time we have to adopt ours. Typically, we then pass any increases in the education cost sharing grant on, usually August or September. This year with COVID, there was a little more uncertainty as far as what the state was going to do. And, you know, so we kind of delayed to try and see, are they going to change anything? From what I've heard, there's nothing that's going to be done with the, with the second year of the, the biennial budget. So I believe it's now time to pass that on to the, to the Board of Ed.
Yeah.
Typically, response, Counselor Bosco, the, I think, once we pass the, once, once we increase the Board of Ed budget, we cannot take that money back.
Right. That's, that's, I think that's true. All right.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
We'd, then we'd have to, you know, look forward to next, I mean, next year's budget. I mean, this is the agreement we made with them. I mean, I think we have to honor our agreement. I hear you.
I agree. I agree with that. It's just that I'm nervous that if we don't, well, I guess we'll take the chance with them.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Roll call please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Sifrazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Was that four?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Chrisati.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
That's 10 in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Sheila. We move on to item K, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the town manager to sign grant applications and subsequent contracts with the North Central Area Agency on Aging Grants for fiscal year 2022. Whereas the North Central Area Agency on Aging, also known as NCAA, provides several grants to the town's Department of Social Services. Whereas the Department of Social Services is in the process of submitting grant applications to NCAA for funds that will be available to the town in fiscal year 21, 2021, and 2022. Resolve that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign and submit grant applications and subsequent contracts subject to review and approval by the town attorney, and A on behalf of the town of Enfield, with the North Central Area Agency on Aging, and A affixed the corporate seal. Submitted on March 1, 2021 by Cindy Guerrero, Director of Social Services.
Moved.
By Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. Hi, Cindy, welcome. I'm, I'm turning right over. You're welcome, Chris. I don't know if you want to give a.
No, Cindy's available to give any background. I believe this is a renewal, and she, it's for two grants.
Cindy, if you don't mind, just name and title, and you have the floor.
Cindy Guerrero, Director of Social Services, town of Enfield. As Chris said, this is a renewal application to continue our elderly services care coordinated system. And we are, this will be year two of this new and improved system. We actually received a little bit more funding than we have in previous years, so it keeps going. Our at-risk registry, the outreach we've been doing to isolated seniors, and this year, as you can imagine, that's been a tremendous amount of work that we've been doing. Going to add depression screenings, and this is also the program that helps us help folks with the circuit breaker program and other basic needs support. The other part of the, the second NCAA grant is for our grandparents raising grandchildren. Monies are used largely to help offset the cost of sending kids to summer camp.
Any questions for Cindy? Cindy, if you don't mind, two, actually, two questions. One, could you just, is the circuit breaker program, it's open right now, so I don't know, maybe could you quickly, if you wouldn't mind telling people where they can sign up if they feel they might be eligible?
So they can sign up through, with Erin Tyman. She's our kids worker here at Social Services at 110 High Street. You would call the main number, and I'm blanking on her extension because I usually just walk down the hall to talk to her, but 8602536397 and get Erin.
And that's open, right, people can sign up till May, right?
Yeah, she's taking appoint people. It's by appointment only, but you can call Erin and make an appointment.
Right. And, and again, seniors in town who might feel they need the need for any kind of reimbursement for heating, cooling, whatever it may be, it's a great program and the town fully funds it. So hopefully, hopefully, we continue to get a lot of people involved. And just curious, real quick question, how many, I mean, roughly, how many grandparents would kid, or grandparents with children sign up, I mean, utilize this program roughly? Just curious.
That's, I would say between, up between 10 and 15 that are consistently part of the grandparents group.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Sifrazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Chrisati.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
That's ten in favor, none against, no extensions.
Again, thank you, Sheila. We're under item L for miscellaneous, discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name, on name of, on behalf of the Town of Enfield, with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, whereas the ONDCP and CDC have provided a grant opportunity to the Department of Social Services Youth and Family Services Division as an enhancement to the Drug-Free Communities Grant, whereas Youth and Family Services is in the process of preparing application for the above referenced CARA Local Drug Crisis Grant. Resolve that the Town Manager has authorized to sign and submit the CAR Local Drug Crisis Grant application into, into, and amend contractual instruments thereof in the name and of, and on behalf of the Town of Enfield, submitted on February 19, by Cindy Guerrero, Director of Social Services. By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Crisati.
Mr. Mayor.
Cindy, go ahead, yeah?
Well, you know, the, the fact that COVID has wiped the opioid epidemics off the front page doesn't mean it's gone away. And this is a very aggressive grant. We would be most fortunate if we were able to obtain it. It's for five years. It's to prevent opioid abuse and methamphetamine abuse and prescription drug abuse in youths 12 to 18. I think it's a very worthy cause. We could be awarded up to $50,000 a year for five years. With that, I'll let Cindy fill in the blanks.
Welcome, Cindy, back.
Thank you. And so, many of you are familiar with the Drug-Free Community Grant that has been in town for nearly 10 years, and part of that grant every year is a youth survey that's done. With COVID, we were not able to conduct it in 2020, but with 2019 data, we do know that 3.5% of youth did report misuse of prescription drugs during that time. I mean, during the last 30 days when they completed the survey. This puts us above the national threshold for being eligible to apply. I think the good news is that the issue is not catastrophic, and this is an opportunity to stem the tide. There's a perception that youth carry that use of prescription drugs is not harmful, and so this would be able to provide a lot of education, social media marketing campaign around that issue. And the other target population around prevention would be with prescribing physicians to talk with them about the risks and harm of misused prescription medications. So the effort would be largely, again, it's not individual service, it's community education in order to prevent any situation from getting worse. And it really ties in well with the work. The Enfield Together Coalition will be a significant coordinator of this effort with youth services, and we would be working in partnership with the North Central Health District and the Community Health Center.
Any questions or comments for Cindy? Now, Cindy, I pre, just care, do we, do we currently get this grant, or this is a new grant we're applying for?
This would be a new one.
Yeah, you know, I just want to commend you and your staff for understanding, you know, the mental health aspects on our kids that they've been going through, not being in school full-time, you know, not being able to do the sports or the activities that they love to do full-time, and really not even be able to see their friends as much as they used to. And the fact that you, your staff was willing to, to provide an opportunity for kids just to show up and dribble a basketball, you know, I think is huge. I mean, it really is, and this is, this plays right into it. So again, I think, you know, again, recognizing that need is, you know, I think, in my point, you and your staff deserve a lot of credit, because I think, you know, again, any of our children are dealing with things in a very unique, unique way here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Sifrazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Hamler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
That's ten in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Moving on to item M, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, resolution restoring the facility use policy for the use of town-owned buildings effective May 1, 2020, 2021, excuse me. Whereas the Town Council and Board of Education suspended the facility use policy for the use of schools and town-owned facilities on September 21, 2020, by Resolution Number 5531 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, be it resolved due to the lower rates of infections associated with COVID-19 virus and availability of vaccinations, Resolution 5531 is repealed as of May 1, 2021. Be it further resolved, the Town Council hereby restores the facility use policy and use of town-owned buildings for outdoor, outside agencies effective May 1, 2021, but submitted by Kasha Persiello, our Assistant Town Manager, on February 19, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Mangini.
Kasha will address it. Basically, the council will recall that we suspended the policy back in September. We believe now it's prudent, and it will be safe to reopen as long as outside groups act in accordance with whatever guidelines are then and there in place. Can tell you, as of today's date, we have reopened our library, the central library, Pearl Street, because of its smaller sizes by appointment. We've reopened the senior center under, under a hybrid mode, and Town Hall is still appointment only, but soon, we're monitoring other areas, and soon Town Hall will resume being open to the public as well. So I think we're moving in the right direction. Outside groups are now calling and asking about it. We've, as you've pointed out, in recreation and other sporting, we follow what the schools are doing in the state. So I think we're on a safe course. Kasha?
Welcome, Kasha.
Good evening again. I don't have too much to add, other than what Chris already stated. We are getting requests for use of facilities in the summer that really spurred this. So that's, that's all I really have to add at this point.
Any questions for Chris or Kasha? I think it's great news. I mean, it's great, actually, looking to open it up instead of closing everything down. I mean, just, I mean, in my opinion. Counselor Sakala.
Thanks. So as part of this, is the town going to require, like, a written COVID policy from these organizations, or is it just going to be that they're going to adhere to whatever the policy is at that time, handed down from the state?
I believe we stopped to discuss the details before. I think what we had done was add a blanket statement regarding adhering to COVID principles, our policies, but I think it's a conversation that we need to have internally and see what the guidelines are in May to really answer your question.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, it's for May 1. Again, I think it's great news that we're talking about reopening as opposed to closing, which is great. Now, hearing other questions, roll call, please, Sheila.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Sifrazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.